Twenty seven, twenty five. This whole work session this meeting will now come to order. Let's rise and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. One second Kathy. I just want to remind everyone, grab your mics, pull them into your face, let's make sure everybody out there can hear because I'm hearing more and more about people who are saying they can't hear and they missed something and we're having private conversations. So make sure that you can hear yourself in your ears whenever you're talking, okay? So if you can't hear yourself then pull it up closer and try it again. All right Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard. Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Todd Harper. Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Anders Wellings.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reifler.
Here.
And City Attorney Tom Trask.
Here.
All right, thank you Kathy. All right, we're just going to go right into our first order of business which is a presentation of the Twenty Second Street Bridge Repair Plan by Gemini Engineering and Sciences. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. So this brief presentation, the intent is to allow you to understand what has been going on, what the issues are with the bridge and from there we can have a further discussion. So our involvement, it started when the city received a plan of action notice from DOT about the Twenty Second Street Bridge. Now, the plan of action, it's due to DOT categorizing the bridge, Twenty Second Street Bridge, as scour critical. We'll go into a little bit more of the history. Just as a background, the DOT has contracts with various consultants across the state to perform these evaluations. I believe these are done continuously.
Two years.
Two years. I think the POAs will be issued in two years, but as you'll see, there's been some gaps in timeframe as well. I want to make sure, clear that, and we'll go into what bridge scour is, that the notice is not saying that the bridge is unsafe. I think that's the big point I want to make. It is that it is susceptible, it is, there's a bunch of unknowns that DOT is dealing with and they're putting the requirements on the city to address those. That is what the POA is intended to do. The first POA was issued in 2013. There was some superficial repairs done to the bridge. The POA was issued, reissued in 2019 and now in 2025. And this, and as the city is the bridge owner and as I stated, the city is required to address this POA. It's a pretty extensive history. We were able to get from city manager quite a bit of a box full of history and as best we can pull together, this is where it stands in terms of how we got to this point. So the bridge was constructed in sixty-five, a simple single span bridge. Then there's a variety of different inspections that have occurred throughout the years. The critical time is in nineteen ninety-four when there was the initial pre-screening for scour and that's when the bridge was flagged as scour susceptible. And so, and that's, that screening identified it as scour susceptible, not because of physical evidence, but just because of circumstantial evidence, soils and so forth, all right? Since then, since ninety-four.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you define scour?
It is coming up next.
Sorry.
I may have put the slides in the wrong order, I think maybe, but it's coming up next. So since then, there have been several various bridge repairs, more of a exposed rebar due to the structure itself, not necessarily dealing with the scour, is what we're going to. And then there's twenty-two seventy, two thousand and eight, just more structural repairs. So the critical point is two thousand and eleven when there was an addendum issued by DOT and that is when the bridge was first identified or categorized as scour critical. We'll go into what that means. Since then, two thousand and thirteen, a little bit more detail was performed with actual numerical analysis and as we'll go into a little more Phase Three stability, that is the structural assessment, that was not performed. So fast forward today, let's see here, we are dealing with addressing the scour critical designation. And Councilmember Elliott, this is the slide where we define what scour really is. So scour is just erosion and I believe the pass there is called Boats Head Canal, I think is a historical term, I haven't seen that term recently, so I will go with it. But the, so what happens is when you have the tides come in and out and especially doing hurricanes, when you have a narrow pass like that, what happens is the water will come in and out and when you're squeezing, the velocity goes up. When the velocity goes up, the shear stresses on the sides and this determines, also determined by the type of soils, it'll scour, it will, you run into it. The picture here shows scour around the pier. You can see the stability of the bridge is based on how deep these piles are relative to the scour depth. And one thing, the reason why the, the bridge was determined to be scour critical is because nobody knows the depth of those piles. We don't know how long they are, how deep they are.
How long ago were you putting?
Nineteen sixty-five.
And there's no record of.
Correct.
As far as. Have been?
Yes, sir. We can look at, that's part of the assessment that's going to be done, but we did not see any information available about the bridge, the physical, any type of geotech such. There's been some, certain, various studies on the, on the structural portion of it, load bearing, but nothing about scour and the piers. And so, so this is what scour critical looks like is in a situation like this, there is about a seven feet of scour that was identified early this year. So that was seven, about seven feet from twenty thirteen. So twenty thirteen set a benchmark and they measured it again in twenty twenty-five, they found about an additional seven feet of scour. It sounds pretty extensive, but you know, the, the actual calculation, when the bridge is designed, there's a design, a scour calculation that's performed. That's what determines the depth of these piles. And I believe it was something, the scour calculated to be something on the order of fourteen, fifteen feet. So the, the pile should be deep enough to address those, that scour depth. But again, no one knows for sure how deep those piles are. So at this point, the, where do we stand? We are coordinating with DOT, getting information from DOT, historical information, historical underwater inspections. We are dealing with our subconsultant who is a structural engineer. The, there is, there is one aspect of this that's missing which is the structural analysis. The DOT has identified the, the bridge is scour critical, but that unknown is the missing part and once you know what that pile depth is, or at least an estimate of it, then structural analysis has to be performed. And that is the, our subconsultant, if we're discussing with them, to get their assessment of the costs, the pros, the cons, and where we are going to, towards right now is full planning level assessment. To look at, because assessments like this have not been done, to look at what are the costs of repair, we're talking some rip rap or some other kind of countermeasure, what's the cost of that versus full replacement of the bridge? We're considering the other issues with the bridge, we're considering the age of the bridge. And so, the direction that we're going is to get an estimate from the art subcontractor to perform this assessment so at the end, city council will be able to see all the options with costs and schedules. So it is, the key points are, you know, the, the city received this POA, it's forced scour critical for the bridge, it's not a, it is due to unknown, the unknown, not because of some finding that DOT developed.
Council, questions, comments? Let's start with city manager Reifler.
So is there any way that would replace me down below that we could try to discover the initial depth of these piles?
Talking with the civil, the structural, you might be able to, you know, look at comparable bridges during that time, but still it's unknown. Even what they call non-destructive testing, even doing these, performing these tests, it may not be conclusive. So there's always going to be, unless you dig down and find out, these tests are going to provide us a good idea, but then that's what the structural engineer does. He factors in the uncertainties along with what he already knows about the structure. So that would be part of his investigation, but we've, we've looked into that already and we didn't find anything that he can find that would be the tell us probably what the depth should be.
And then what's the estimated cost for the analysis, case study analysis?
He's working on the details, you know, an estimate, rough estimates, based on various other subconsultants we've discussed, you're probably looking at on the order of plus or minus hundred thousand dollars.
So that's for the assessment and then from there, we will get the recommendation?
Yes, it would be a blueprint of how to proceed in providing the risks, pros and cons of different directions going.
And then do you have any numbers, estimates of what this possibly costs?
DOT estimated the repair, it is part of a POA. I believe those estimates were from twenty thirteen, so were really not really reliable. I think we kind of updated it to current numbers and it could be anywhere repair wise on the order of five hundred thousand dollars to a million. And so those are the estimates. Again, his, his determination will include a more concrete number.
And then did you get any cost on a total bridge replacement?
Well, my estimate was completely off, up and with him. Right now, comparable bridges, his estimate, just again, rough, in different circumstances, but he, comparable estimates were on the order of forty-five million dollars.
So my concern is it's unknown at this point, when we ask these questions, because we have to first do a full analysis to understand what we're looking at. Would FDOP be able to give us their recommendation once we've discovered the depth of the pile?
That's it. I don't, I don't believe that FDOP provides a recommendation. What they'll do is once the assessment is performed and if the assessment concludes that, you know, when we're getting a pile deep enough or we're going to perform countermeasures, then the bridge will be removed from that scour critical list. They're waiting on us.
Total bridge replacement, what do people do whenever that happens? Because there's only one way in and one way out.
Keep the, keep the existing one, go the other one, I know, that's the easiest solution.
Yes, I do not know that answer, but I'm sure based on, you know, other projects and river projects, they'll probably keep one side open. If it's, that's FDOP, that's a question for the, for the design.
Kyle, what's our, what's, how much do we have currently in the bank for this project?
So as far as what we set aside for bridges in the future, I believe we're at roughly, like, close to four hundred thousand total with repairs and replacement costs that we saved.
I have to imagine there's probably some grant money available. It's amazing how much money the county has to give out that they received from the federal government.
Right. So were you saying, you saying the, the min, is about like six hundred thousand, so a hundred thousand for the, for the structural work? And best case is we're at least putting a half a million dollars into a bridge?
Hundred thousand for plus or minus four.
That's fine, yeah, that's a bull, that's a bull.
Provide it, and then if it's just repairs, installing the countermeasures and it's on the order of five hundred to a million.
Okay. Thanks. And you said, and what would the, I guess, if the, now, if the learning from, you know, if we could learn the depth of this, if it's poor and not stable, then would we think it like, you gotta replace the bridge?
It leans something towards that.
Right, okay. So, and if it is, and you're saying like, you said something like, well, maybe you could drill to find out how deep it is, or ditch, why is that not an option? Is that way too expensive?
There are various tests that are performed. A lot of them are, unless you did and you don't, because you again, you would not want to, you know, I guess, further.
Erode the strength of it, right, okay.
So a lot of the testing is like a secondary type of acoustic test.
Right, I was thinking, could you drill down a little bit, like, what are you going to go, if you're going seven, it was maybe fourteen, you gotta go another seven feet. Could you put ultrasonics down there to find out if there's concrete down there?
Well, hopefully it's deeper than that.
Okay, okay, okay.
You can get it, you can get a three inch to six inch quarter drill. Right. Comes out and they can go down a couple hundred feet.
Right, and then just fill it in.
What are the piles made out of now?
Concrete.
It's just, it's just a regular concrete pile? With no quartet steel involved or anything like that?
We don't know.
Yeah. We don't have any plans.
In reading various architectural studies, I've, I've read about a technique that I don't know the name of, but like they can find entire cities under, underground and they can tell the shape of the buildings and how deep they are, whatever, is.
Yeah, when I was, some of the ultrasonics.
Geodar, it's not geodar, it's geodar or something like that, that.
There's some, I mean, again.
And they just rule with a little, you know, surface thing.
Talking with various geotechnical and different contractors that perform these MDEs, the pile testing as well, there's very, a variety of different ones, but each one confirmed that it is not, cannot be conclusive. A lot of it is because if there are cracks, a lot of times it's just hitting a hammer and then sound, measuring the time that you hear the echo back. So if there's cracks, it may not, you might not get the response. And so, none of them can really say it's conclusive, but that's where the structural engineer, with the information, unknowing the uncertainties, they can make a designation of, you know, what needs to be done.
So just to clarify that, so you're saying that, like, it's uncertain if we do the ultrasonic method or some method that gives us, I guess, some level of confidence? If we don't do that, we're relying on what, estimates? Or what are we, what's the structural engineer we're relying on if he doesn't know the depth?
No, he needs that.
So what would, what would be the other method that we would get the depth then?
There's different types of, of tests that you can perform. Some pile integrity testing and then there's a variety of other non-destructive testing. There's different tests.
So you're proposing another test method to assess the depth of the pile?
Right.
Without having to do drilling or else.
Right.
And you think they would be as effective?
Right, they're, they're used to doing this. So this is a one-time deal, these structural engineers with the bridges and the ones that we're discussing on our team, they are contractors for DOT, so they have performed these elsewhere.
That's where I was confused, okay, I got it now.
And I'm guessing they're, they're able to do the inspection without disturbing.
That's the idea.
What's there?
Yes, sir.
Where I would go out there and dig a hole and next thing you know, it's all beach mud.
And mobilization, having boats out there, it's just, they're trying to do as little affection, as little as much as possible with the traffic.
So the hundred thousand would include the ability to get an accurate assessment of the depth?
Yes. It would include geotechnical pathometric and the, and the E and then the structural assessments.
Okay.
And this is just an estimate. So this latest inspection, was this because of Hurricane Colleen or were we just due?
We were due.
We were due.
The effect, probably, okay. I'm just wondering if they, they confirm seven feet degradation that they found is partially or mostly from what happened in the storms.
That was the assumption, yeah, it got worse. Okay. And we, we put in the budget this year for bridge replacement, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars and bridge repair, seventy-six thousand five hundred.
Yeah, all right, so it, it sounds like we don't have, we really don't have a choice. We need an inspection. We don't know what we don't know.
For this whole analysis, right? It's a complete analysis.
I have a question, if you guys don't mind.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
What is the cost to design a new bridge? The design cost?
If, if the recommendation is a replacement, I do not know, this is not just going to be designed, it's going to be the permitting as well and, you know, other potential tasks. I do not know what that task is going to be designed. You can estimate, you know, typically like ten percent of the construction cost, it's a general rule.
So what's the expected life of a new bridge today?
These bridges should be on the order of fifty years. And so that's why we're coming up on that with this bridge as well. And so, that's another factor that the structural engineer would have to consider.
You won't have to vote on it again.
I want to. So if we did the repairs, I'm assuming that's an unknown, that when additional costs might arise for additional repairs?
Excuse me?
If, if we don't do the new bridge?
Yes, sir.
And we go with the phase one repairs, we really don't know how often we'll need to do additional repairs?
Well, that's, you know, that, as far as scour goes?
Okay.
If we go down that road, we will have an assessment of the longevity of that.
Okay, all right. You don't have any estimate of that, of how little we might get if we were to do that scour or repair? You don't know what that buys us yet. It won't, you won't know until the analysis is done. Okay.
So, I'm sorry, lost your thought, sorry. If, I lost it, come back quick, come back.
All right, well, we're still going to have to have an inspection some, somehow. I would say, based on Jody Shirley's suggestion, that we should probably go ahead and start looking into grants and seeing what we qualify for?
Yes, sir. Yes, city manager, we've already started, we've submitted a total of, for the bridge, I believe, two separate grant applications. One was to FDM, FDM, I believe, turned it and said that that particular grant was not, the bridge does not qualify for that bridge, but we do have a FDP joint quarter grant that we're hoping will come through.
Okay. And what about the NLS counting?
We have not discussed.
That's probably next.
I remember, so if we do decide after the analysis and get some design for the countermeasures, do you have any examples of bridges with a similar lifetime that, you know, been repaired and how much more lifetime it's given?
Not off the top, but I'm sure that the, the countermeasures that would be performed would be sufficient to, you know, to, but there's, it's going to be some other issue with the bridge. These bridges have a fifty-year lifespan and a lot, most bridges go well beyond fifty, by the way. There's not the cutoff, but there are other aspects that is beyond just the scour countermeasures that would determine the lifetime.
Makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, you said it's go forward with the inspection. I'm confused because it's tough and the recommendation is to go forward with assess, the full assess, structural assessment. Is that what you mean, the same thing?
That's what I mean.
Okay, same thing, okay.
Yeah, we don't know, we don't actually know what we need, but.
Not only will they inspect it, but they will analyze what it would take to repair it.
Yeah, exactly. FDOP did do an inspection, but they didn't, they don't tell us what to do.
Right, exactly.
There's four phases to their program and they skipped Phase Three, which was the stability analysis, they did not have the power depth.
What is the length of the bridge?
The, the bridge length?
You're not looking at the photograph, what are we talking about, just the space? Are we talking about the bolt head on, you know? I'm looking at the photo that was included, are we talking about replacing, potentially from here to here, I mean, from seawall to seawall, can we replace? Does it go beyond that into the roadway?
Yeah, it's a single, a single span, the entire span, and that's where the design will have to come in, is how to tie that back in. I think with, I think these are gas lines as well?
Yeah. Gas lines, with power lines underneath it, there's plenty of tools. But an estimate, what do you think that is? Does anyone know? Like, what are, what are we talking here? And just trying to.
For a total replacement?
Apply a number of like.
What'd you say? Four point five million replacement, or are you talking about footage?
Footage. What are we talking about?
Isn't that in the part?
Is it in the POA, at least somewhere in there?
Well, it's October twenty-five for sure, because that's what the threshold is for the inspections.
Jody, your answer to the cost per, to put a new.
I'm trying to go, okay.
To a whole new bridge or a repair?
Replacing.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay, yeah. No, I get that, yeah.
I happen to know a couple of bridges that you've gone and talked to about it. And want to kind of say, hey, we've got a bridge that spans this and it's two lanes and.
It's a two-lane, single span.
About fifty feet.
Combiator.
Pardon me? It's about fifty feet long. Fifty feet? Yeah. After forty-five.
Figuring around forty-five hundred to ten thousand per square foot for bridge replacement. And is this, with modern design, is this what a total replacement looks like? Or do you remove the, the offending supports and just tie them directly into the land?
Well, there may be different options. We've also seen cases where a bridge might want to have an industrial lane as well, it would widen slightly, so there's different options like that.
This is a pretty wide bridge, correct?
It's, it's pretty wide and it actually does sort of have a, on one side, there's an area where I think you can walk offside of the traffic there, which is probably about thirty foot wide.
I'm assuming this scour is occurring on each side? Okay, okay.
All right, so do we need to, we're obviously going to have to put this out in the air.
Gemini is going to provide a proposal for the analysis and design.
The assessment, so it won't include the design, the assessment will provide, you know, estimates to for design permitting as well or whether it's going to be countermeasures or a full replacement.
When, when can we have that proposal?
We are waiting on the structural, I believe he's owes us the air estimates later on this week and then we can assess that one and incorporate it into our proposal.
I do, I have one request.
Yes, sir.
Whenever you come back, would you at least know the dimensions of our bridge?
Absolutely.
Anything else on this topic?
This, this type of project seems one that's ripe for grants, you know, post hurricane repair grants.
That's what I was.
Seems like there'd be tons of stuff out there.
It says structural length forty feet, total length ninety-seven feet, sec area eleven hundred sixty square feet. I'll, I'll send the stat sheet.
All right. So, yeah, what is the next step? So you're saying we're gonna, I mean, do we, once they come back with the analysis, we could get some cost proposal at that point and then we would decide if we want to bring it to a vote in one week, right? That's it? Okay. So.
We're probably moving forward on the, on the analysis, like...
Yeah, so we're, yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying, so we're gonna agree to say, let's move forward with doing the analysis.
Once we get the proposal, we'll have to go.
Okay.
And then we'll have to also consider, all right, what do we get for a repair versus replace?
Right.
And just take a deep dive into what our options really are.
Right.
What's best for us?
But we won't be able to do that balancing act until we finish the assessment, is that fair?
No.
What's the process for searching for grants? Do we hire somebody for that? Do we have specialists? Do we do that? Where do we...
Well, Gemma and I's been applying for some grants, but I believe the city staff also handles some of that.
We've tried hiring people in the past. It doesn't work. I think you almost have to have an investor consultant or something. I mean, you know, like, we can't, I think we hired a consultant once before to look for grants for us.
And they were just, they were doing a standard grant package, just like we can do. They didn't have any skin in the game, and really, we're just taking our money. You're pretty successful. I'm not trying to put more work on your table.
My only success was with the, the parts grant, we didn't take it, though, with a matching. We had, we had the one during COVID, but that was practically happened to us.
And that's why I think the storm money is probably the best thing to look at.
Right, and there are some grants right now, the analysis is talking about them, so we need to, we need to live on that pretty quick.
Because they give the money away quickly, and they don't lose anyone.
All right, anything else on this topic before we move on to item two? Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Reefer, let's talk about the Ninth Street pump station bid results.
So I've provided the report that Gemma and I put together, just summarizing the four contractors that did on this project. And the, they analyzed the two lowest contractors, which was, the very lowest would be Kaminga and Rubenlets Incorporated, and then followed by Castgar Construction. And when they reviewed, they found that Castgar had more experience, correctly, with pump projects and well projects that are actually put around like pump stations. Kaminga and Rubenlets, they had experience with Santar sewer pump stations, but not so much with the stormwater. And they did make some calls and found that, you know, Kaminga or KNR, as you said, they were, you know, they were qualified, had a lot of great stormwater projects, road projects. We actually had experience with them for twelve and thirteenth, when they did their job. And that they feel fully capable of doing this project. So we were, in my experience with them, I believe they're a good company. And if we were to seriously consider awarding this project, then I wouldn't hesitate, just from the lack of actual experience with stormwater pump systems.
What would you find, what would you think?
So KNR, I believe KNR is qualified for this job.
Okay.
And through Gemma and I's further inquiry, they just discovered that, that they felt that they were confident, complete the job, for the plans.
Right.
So there's nothing that we found with inexperience lacking that, you know, deterred us and feel confident that they could...
They have done these jobs.
They have done, they've done a lot of stormwater system work.
How about those stations?
They did do sewer, pump, Santar sewer.
Okay. What about, what about lift stations?
They have, yes.
So is four thirty-nine included, Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
There was a couple things I saw, Kyle, when I was just kind of comparing all the results, I just kind of did a little spreadsheet on them, but a couple places where I thought that they were, you know, Kaminga was surprisingly under the average of all of them, was like the power connection. Power company connection was, I think you guys estimated about fifty thousand. Pretty much every vendor was in the fifty, one, the most expensive one was ninety, but Kaminga came in at two thousand, like, way under call. I don't know if they're just gonna bury that somewhere or catch up somehow on that, but that seemed like they didn't know, they were a little off, maybe they underbid that one. The control panels, I guess everyone was pretty good on the control panel. I think you guys estimated control panel really expensive. These all guys seemed to be pretty even on that, like fifty thousand a piece versus the hundred and twenty-five thousand for a control panel, which is partly why I think we're seeing a little bit of a savings. The other thing, they all bid the pump price like significantly higher, when we actually have quotes of the pump price to be less than all of these numbers. I don't know, I think we even got a twenty-two-five million dollar, I think quote we had was for twenty-two-five, so I don't know if that's just where they, I mean, I know they don't have a line item for labor, so they probably throw labor into all of these, so, fine. The other thing I was noticing was on the, the pump well structure. I think they were, I think maybe Kaminga was a lowball on that, was nineteen thousand, and these other guys were more like forty thousand, fifty thousand, so if the pump well was, I don't know, maybe they're experienced level in doing them, or they're just cheaper on labor, so whatever. Yeah, those were my main points, I think I noticed. Yeah. So I was kind of wrestling my head whether, if we were to do this, whether we should go on the cheap, and I worry that Kaminga might, might lose their shorts on it, but maybe that's okay, they lose their shorts as long as the quality's there. So I was kind of feeling maybe Kaminga might be the...
Well, if they walk away.
Yeah, and they lose their shorts, that would be for...
Our shorts are yours.
Right, right. That was my only, just looking at some of the comparison bids, and I get that Razorback was like way over the top, that sound, and they, and you can tell by their estimates, everything's like big rounded numbers, so they just did it best time, and they just kind of roundballed everything, all marked everything.
Did each of these bids have the same equipment?
They all had the same, like twenty-six items quoted on them, so I'd say they were pretty much all the same.
As far as the pump motors?
Oh, the pumps are, pumps are called out specifically, that one's got to be specifically. Yeah, that's called out specifically. Yeah, for instance, like Razorback quotes had that two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and, you know, we know we can get it for like, what is it, like a hundred and twenty thousand?
Series mark.
Yeah, series mark.
What was, what was Kaminga?
For the pump?
For the pump?
Hundred and fifty-five?
Hundred and fifty-five. So that went up from MWI's?
They were...
MWI was gonna sell it, the revenue was for one fifteen?
Yeah, I don't remember where it was, let's see.
Yeah, I got it.
I think when we were first looking at that pump, it was a hundred and thirty-eight for the smaller one, and like a hundred and fifty...
I got the sixteen-hundred gallon for a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Okay. The last quote I saw that we got from Kyle was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So I don't know, who your vendor is, are they both the same vendor?
We had MWI, and then the other vendor was...
And that's that, is that a U N?
Light.
Yeah, two of them, two of them.
The same, okay.
Light, the other vendor.
So I don't know if you had any, would you have any concerns with, you know, that Kaminga's, is their pricing...
I think if you bond the project, you go with them.
Okay. You know, I don't think it's any surprise. Okay, yeah, that's where I don't know the expertise of that. The overall cost varied by a hundred and fifty thousand, I don't think it's a surprise that you're gonna find line items that equal that.
Different.
Right, right. Hundred and fifty thousand less. So you gotta find it somewhere where the one company is bidding less, that's not a surprise.
Well, I really think this needs to go back to the drawing board, because I've been doing a little bit of research myself, and we're not looking to get rid of a cat two, cat three hurricane situation, we're looking to get rid of rain, all right, that piles up in the street. And I own a house and out Gator, Gator pumps for ninety-five hundred dollars, three-inch pump will take up between five hundred and six hundred gallons a minute at ninety-five hundred dollars. All right, now, if you're just gonna do a directional board cut for thirty-five feet, thirty-five yards, you're talking another twenty-five thousand. Then you have to run a power line, six-inch pipe will put out eight hundred and eighty gallons at a full force. You would eliminate a street that had the valve completely closed, the pump off, that usually is around two feet deep, just right now, okay? If the water can't get out, a three-inch pump would eliminate all that water in less than a hundred and forty minutes. Now, it's if it was shut down, so if the pump was continuously running, you probably wouldn't have much water in the street.
How has it been now that we've gotten the sewer system?
Well, we haven't had any bad rain.
But we've had the time, it's right.
Yeah, we've had zero, zero flood.
I went out at two-thirty in the rain one time, and then three-thirty in the morning the other time, and there wasn't a drop of water.
Yeah, no, we have not, since the valves have been, every place we have a working check valve, it's working.
If we're looking at paying, and these costs will go up, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to one street, you're gonna need at least six streets, I'm thinking, you know, connecting, like, marrying two streets in the morning. And you could probably do six streets for less than four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And I don't know how the residents are really going to say. Unless, if I lived on Ninth Street, I would vote for it. If I lived on Second Street, I would vote for it. I mean, why are you fixing this street? Not much. So if we're gonna do a pilot program, why don't we do a fifty-down dollar pilot program for one street, rather than four hundred and fifty thousand? I just don't see the money there in the future. So you're, you're giving us a solution of, what is this, a pump you roll out, whatever it's on? Oh, no, no, you would put, the only, you could probably do the whole job without lift station, and I don't know how big each outfall box is. So you would stick the three-inch pump in the outfall box, or else you would cut another box next to that, all right? So if you have to cut another box next to that, that's gonna cost you probably, eh, anywhere from five to fifteen thousand dollars, all right? So that water would run into that box with the three-inch pump. If you could just put the pump right where the valve is, all right, then you wouldn't have to put another lift station. Then you run your power cord, and I'm estimating, and I got, I got real quotes for the directional board, but I'm just estimating the power cord run, somewhere around ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars.
For, for electrical?
Yeah, for four, for four eighty three days. And that depends on how far you have to run. Like, if you did it at Seventh Street, it's right there, I don't, I think Ninth Street also has a closed box or closed source for power.
We were looking at it, close, we could come from this here, we thought, because they thought if they came down from those transformers, it was gonna be more high cost.
Yeah.
But they said they could do it anywhere if they had to.
Right, sure, yeah, I mean, you just have to run a line, and if it's overhead, it's gonna be cheaper, if it's underground, it's gonna be more... What's the lifespan for the fifty thousand? For the pump? They have some that are twenty years old, but the replacement, you would be talking about a motor and a panel, which is...
Stop with the, the stormwater, the...
Well, they're actually, they're actually like, I call them sewer pumps, they're actually like a trash pump, so anything that goes into that, it'll eat it up. And then you have a separate line that you lay out? Well, my idea would be you run a directional board from the sewer, not the sewer, from the stormwater plate to the outfall of it. You run that six inches into the ground, and then you run a ninety up and a ninety over, and expel the water over the seawall. Because if the water comes over the seawall, pump's not gonna do anything. Right, right. So this would be a rain event, I believe, solution. That's, that's all it's ever been. It's a rain event and post-storm, whenever, whenever, everything's flooded and you've just got a bowl of soup. Right, like, you were here when, MWI pumps, you were here in the W I pumps, and you were saying if the water ever reaches the seawall for a short amount of time, we could die it. If you had three or four pumps in the southern end of the city, we'd have probably kept all the houses dry. But we're not looking to do that, and we're not looking to do that with a sixteen-hundred-gallon pump, we're looking to do that with a twenty-four-hundred-gallon pump per minute, three times, which would actually double the cost here. Kyle, what's, what's your thoughts on that plan?
Well, number banker provided the Gator pump information to Gemma and I, so they've done some, some research into it a little bit, I'm very excited they've discovered.
Hi, my name is Parker, I'm here, hopefully you remember me. Yes, we contacted Gator pumps, and I was hoping to have additional information from them before this meeting, unfortunately, I'm still waiting for that. But we talked with them last week, and something that I wanted additional clarification is that after we called them, they basically said for each of the pumps, they even, they were putting council and then back, back card, they, each of them will need basically a lift station setup. Yes. So each of them will need a bomb, each of them will need a control panel, so they will still need that car set up that we're doing right now for each of these pumps, which is a possibility, but the thing is that, you know, each of these streets, not only, like, for example, Ninth Street as an example, we had limited right-of-way. If we want to do replicate these on each of these streets, it's a possibility, but we also need to take into consideration that we have these restrictions of the space that we have available, and also the power that goes on Ninth Street. After contacting Duke, as Kyle mentioned, we were only able to get finished street power from Seacoal, there's a transformer that we need to drop the line all the way to the pump location. In the other streets, I'm not sure where that three-phase power is, I think it's coming from the main road, and so that's also something that needs to be in consideration. And the one pump that we are dealing with right now, that was sized specifically for Ninth Street, was based also on additional modeling that Gemma and I completed to make sure that previous events that the city has to observe do not show the same level flooding once this size pump is installed. So it is a possibility that right now on our end, based on what Gator was providing as an example, it looks like constructability is, that's where the cost will be at a pay. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, yes, the cost for end of the August around one hundred, I think, yeah, I remember one thirty, so one hundred and thirty-eight thousand is probably what it quoted us for. We got an estimate from Flight, they are also a provider that is actually widely used in different municipalities, they quoted us for a hundred and eighty thousand, and that included pump and panel, so like the total cost for the entire setup. Something that we noticed is that in the quote that they provided us, they actually included a duplex panel and two pumps. So they gave us like a setup for a lift station, for like a sewer station, that you have like a backup pump. So we also contacted them to get an estimate on just a single pump and a simple panel for that pump, so I'm hoping that that cost estimate that they sent us this week will also reuse the total price of the pump and the panel.
Now, the, the original system, was it, did it require three-phase power also?
Yes, sir, because with end of the August, I remembered that phase one will increase the price slightly. I think Gator pumps, though, they do provide a phase one option.
Yeah, but we're not gonna get, you're not gonna get the horsepower.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Right, right.
Lift, you're always about two hundred gallons. So as far as this project goes, what, where is the big, what are we losing to make the price so much less going with Gator pumps?
I can't chart right now, I can't correct this one, but is that the price of a school for Gator pumps was a smaller capacity, I think those were like...
Three-inch?
Three-inch, but like, there already was like, what, four hundred gallons per minute, I think?
Five hundred sixty.
Right, and then one that we included for this, probably like sixteen hundred gallons per minute.
That's an eight-inch pipe, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. I don't, I didn't ask Gator how much their six-inch pump is.
I did, I said, I'm waiting for it, I asked for all of that information, also I said for projects that they have done, because he mentioned that these prices have been... he mentioned that these projects have been done in our cities by then. So I asked him for like an example project that we could see if that is something that made their pumps.
Yeah, if, if, Mr. Mayor, Gator I worked with in the past, I mean, there's a million other pump outfits out there. They're not the fastest people, to get back to you.
No.
Some are, I mean, you can go to Ring Power and get pumps too, but I just can't see five-hundred, or four-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Well, based upon what I'm hearing, uh, it's also easier to lay a four-inch pipe to get it out to the seawall.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be much easier to get de-ismant, uh, if one is required, it's gonna be less invasive, uh, and I kind of, I'm leaning towards the idea of doing more than one to actually see, because we know what's gonna happen. You're gonna, it's, it's all gonna run together eventually, uh, so...
What do you mean, all's gonna run together?
What's that?
What do you mean, all gonna run together?
Well, what I'm saying is that, you know, everything in this, where, everything in this area floods.
Right, right.
And, uh, there's low points, and then there's super-low points.
Right, right.
All heading towards the super-low points.
Right.
Uh, but it, I mean, it just seems to me that really to solve the problem, that is probably the better way to go, and, uh, I don't know how everyone else feels, but I would, I would lean towards and actually feel better, knowing that we've got a big bridge project coming up. Uh, if we tried something smaller and we actually see how it works, um, certainly we can go back later if it, if it's not sufficient, and then rethink the project, but, um, I've told all of you all along, give me something to vote on. If I can get this group to agree on a project, I definitely want to help the south streets, uh, so...
What are we, what are we talking about in terms of number of streets and cost per street with this alternative?
We're talking probably from Fourteenth Street down to First Street.
All of them?
Yeah, I mean, they all flood.
And all of them would be how much? All of them would be how much?
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm with anywhere from forty-five, sixty...
Replicate for every street?
Sixty thousand dollars.
Even if it's a hundred thousand, you've got five streets.
Or pairs. Exactly, that's, that's the point I'm making, and I, I'm, that's what I'm hearing from Frank also, is that we could do a pilot program with one street, test it out, and it's not so painful to continue rolling out. And it sounds to me like it's actually a little bit quicker, because you're not having this huge sum.
The pumps are in stock, these pumps, on these bids have to be made. So those pumps, that, if you go with MWI or somebody else, we're probably talking, and you heard, six to nine pumps.
Right. Can Gator get the...
Well, if they're in stock, I would believe it when I see it, but they're saying, oh, now we can ship it. They even gave you the shipping cost.
Well, here's what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that we're right at the very end of hurricane season, and we've got quite a few months until it starts back up again. Uh, if the pumps are readily available, then I'm, I'm all for trying something, uh, to see if we can help these streets out.
Just, just to clarify something, so you're saying, so you think we can get the five-hundred? I mean, we're basically talking, you know, one-third capacity, right? And we showed in that analysis that with three or four events last year, it would've flooded the street. And that was without, that was with check valves in place, because right now, with the check valves in place, when it rains, it's gonna be worse. So our rain events are gonna be worse now, when they are too much, that they overflow, because they're not gonna drain out.
When the tide's on.
When it's high tide, right, yeah.
Every time the tide, the rain.
Right, no, right. But it'll be worse than what it was without the check valves.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, so if the water's accumulating into the storm sewers...
Not gonna be worse, because the check valve's stopping the water from going out. But if it's high tide, you can't get out anyway. Well, the street's gonna be higher than high tide.
Yeah, well, it's, it's...
The street right now, the check valve closes under the water.
And the rainwater fills it.
It's nothing to do with the outfall, it's where the street is.
And it's gonna take, it's not gonna drain, and currently, it's not gonna drain at all.
Simple, simple...
Two-point-eight, three-tide, we have a three-point-five tide, two-point-eight without a check valve, the water starts accumulating in the street with no rain.
Right.
Okay, and it will actually sometimes almost crest on some of our streets. The owner's is saying, with the check valves in place, that's not happening right now. So we've already cured...
Yeah, like, all sunny day, I agree with that. He's saying it's gonna be worse. I'm saying that on high tide, high tide rainy days, it's gonna be worse.
Worse than...
Worse than without a check valve.
Now.
Oh, worse without a check valve.
Worse than that.
Yeah.
So like, you can look at, you can look at Twelfth Street, you have pictures of what Twelfth Street looks like on a rainy day with a check valve, we have check valves.
Right, but, but two-point-eight, so that doesn't reopen till two-point-eight. So you might have a four-hour window before it closes, reopens. In that four-hour window, you can get a two-inch rainstorm per hour, and that's gonna accumulate, you get seven-point-four gallons per minute for square feet, I mean, that could be ninety thousand gallons in, 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 that, that's why that five-hundred-and-sixty gallon per minute pump would take about a hundred.
I think you were correct earlier on when you said, the solution we're talking about now is not for cat-three hurricanes. And when they said, uh, when it works, we have to define what works means, you know, this system we're talking about, when is it, when we say it's gonna work? What does that mean? It's gonna work when we have a six-inch rainstorm in three hours? Those type of things, we just can't say when it works.
I think if you have, one of the worst scenarios we ever had is like a three-inch an hour rainstorm, but it didn't last the whole hour.
Right.
Okay, so, you're gonna have water in the Miami, or the, I call Miami curbs, okay? You're gonna have water there, but it's gonna be excellent, too. Right now, it just, you know, it's up in every place.
I mean, Gemini did that analysis, we did see that analysis, we had it, we can bring it back up to one, but we did the analysis with Gemini that said, use the last year as an example, with the check valves in place, without the pump, it's gonna flood the streets this much, and without, with the, with the rain events, specific rain events, we go, you're gonna get this level of flooding, and he showed it, you know? He's got, we can pull out the maps, and it shows water up to people's driveways, to garages and stuff. But if that had made it happen like three times last year, granted, that would be, so we've gotta decide in our head, do we want to fix something that happens three times a year? I don't know, you know, that's, now, I guess...
Happened because we didn't have the check valves working, that's what we...
No, 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 this is with the check valve in place.
And here's the other thing, we need to manage expectations, this is what I'm having a struggle with, is that everyone has a different expectation of what they expect to see.
Right.
And the residents probably have something completely different than what each of you think you wanna see.
Right.
Frank kicked this horse's nest and got us into this five-hundred-thousand-dollar. Thank you for continuing your research.
No, thanks, man.
But, but I'll go back to what I've been saying all along with the storm management stuff, is we're managing expectations, and we don't know, no one, this is all unforeseen, no one knows what the outcome's gonna be. We can throw some, well, it might be this, or it might be that, but is that gonna ever satisfy anyone? I don't think so.
Probably not.
If there's always water on the street.
These people here know.
No, it's not.
The thing that I think will satisfy people is, these storms don't last an hour. Sometimes they do last about an hour, they come down, they come down harder, like, the water sits in that street sometimes for four hours, okay? Where, if we go with a sixteen-hundred-gallon pump, that water will be out of the street in thirty-five, forty minutes.
It wouldn't even accumulate, it won't even accumulate.
Well, that's the problem that I have with it, is I have to fully understand that we're gonna have some big storms, and that things are gonna happen. I understand that, I understand that we're gonna flood, I get that. What I don't want to see is that, just because the tide is up a little bit, enough to where it closes that check valve, and then the rain comes along, suddenly you can't get to your front door, you can't get out of your car, much less drive down the street. And I see that on all of these streets. And so, that's, I think that's what we need, the message that we need to get out is, is that, hey, this isn't gonna save you from a hurricane, it's not gonna do it, it's not gonna help. But what it's gonna help with is this rare occurrence that does happen several times, that we see it over and over.
You, you remember that storm before Halloween, in the summer? It came down like three inches in an hour, I mean, it just came down, you know, and it flooded every place, it flooded the good streets, and, uh, and I think the tide was like point eight, it was less than a foot. The water couldn't get out, the worst storms.
Yeah, and my point is, is that, I don't, you can't do anything about saltwater, to get on, check valve's working correctly, alright? Saltwater gets in your street, sorry, there's not much we can do for you. However, whenever, whenever, um, as long as that, the water gets below the level of the seawall, then we can pump it out.
Right.
So we can accelerate this, and get that, get you back to normal quicker. Also, these events where the check valves close, it rains like crazy, those should pretty much just go away. It's the, it's the keen high tides and the, the storms and the storm surge, can't help you with that, sorry, I'm sorry, but there's only so much we can do. So, it's, it's, my question is, is that what we want? Is this what we wanna solve? Do we wanna solve these, these nuisance events, uh, and at least bring down flooding occurrences some? Or are we just gonna accept it all the way around? And that's, that's really what it comes down to.
And that's what I'm trying to propose, uh, you'll be able to get your car out of the driveway, go down the street with this solution, alright? And it isn't gonna solve a cat-three storm, a cat-two storm, okay? Maybe a cat-one storm will help.
But when the residents see that there's still water in the street...
I disagree with that.
They're gonna be throwing darts at you, saying, you didn't do what you said you were gonna do.
Right, that's why I was thinking, that's why I kinda thought that this analysis they did would give us the visual, this is the expectation, this is what you get, this is what you get for half a million dollars. Here's a picture with your street flooded.
One street, half a million dollars.
No, I know, well, I mean, right, no, it's half a million dollars for one street, I get it, I get it, right?
Yeah.
And I, and we could all say that, you know, you're not gonna get any of that, sorry, I'm, I'm, I just wanna get it understandable to residents, that's what I want. I want, that's why I asked them to do that analysis. I wanted it to be visual for residents to decide, you know, hey, that's worth a half million, that's not worth a half million, right? And when I wanna know what residents, I get the, like, I can't walk to my driveway, but if it takes out drywall in my garage or something like that, maybe that's had a big deal with people, but I think you're causing damage to the house. If that could happen, and one of them did show that, one of the events last year would've done that, without being hurricanes, without being king tide, it just hit, you know, went in and starts damaging people's garages. Now, okay, maybe it's only one or two people, I feel bad for those one or two people, should we feel, should we try and solve, solve their problem? I don't know, I just wanna visualize it for them, and then we could decide, I don't care if we do it as a public meeting, and say, mm, they're...
Do you guys buy your houses? Do you have to get a elevation certificate for insurance or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, it's not required?
No.
Well, I guess my insurance requires it. If you wanna get, if you wanna get insurance...
If you're just paying cash...
If you're buying a house, right, you don't have to, right? You don't have to care about it, right? Sure.
When these discussions all started, this is exactly what we were talking about. There wasn't a hurricane yet, everybody was concerned about the risk of a hurricane, but we were talking about the constant flooding, the constant wave, not constant, but the frequent, uh, events of impassable streets. We were talking about emergency equipment, we were talking about the sheriff's cars trying to be able to get to City Hall, uh, the park, um, that's what we were talking about. So I think what we're discussing here is consistent with that, and to your point, managing expectations is really important. We live on an island, we're not going to be hurricane-proof, but we, we can protect basic safety and access to homes under normal circumstances, and we, it will be normal to have storms.
And this goes back to communications. And we actually, I believe that we actually need to have a section on our website that clearly states, hey, this is what happens during these types of events, and here's all the various ways that you could flood. Now, out of all these, we might be able to help with this one and that one.
Right.
But the rest of them, no, I'm sorry, your alternative is to move, raise, or rebuild.
Right.
That's it. And we need to make sure that that is crystal clear, and we keep saying that over and over, because we can swim through a hundred-year thing, and, um...
We probably won't see that again in our lifetime.
Yeah, well...
You can do that, Ryan, be careful.
Let's hope so, that's why they call it a hundred-year thing.
I hope, but I'm ready to do it.
So, so, so my, my question is, do we wanna, do we wanna have this re-quoted, as Frank suggested, and, and do it with the, the Gator pumps? Uh, they're, they're available immediately now. Uh, Kyle, what's your thoughts? Do you think anyone's gonna wanna re-quote this? Are they, would they be interested in doing this job?
So, we're, we're saying we don't wanna award the current bid.
Well, what, what I'm saying is, um, based upon what we've heard, is we get more bang for buck if we go with the lesser expensive, uh, immediately available pump, and we can beat hurricane season if we go that route.
Can we get some more clarity on that before we get you finished?
Yeah, we have that from Gemini.
Gemini?
Says they're still waiting for information, they can't...
What's that?
Uh, Keith, the, uh, this idea with the Gator pumps, uh, you know, between hurricane seasons, is that something that's doable?
Uh, so, so do you...
So we're looking at these, these Gator pumps, these smaller, three-inch pumps, to try to do a smaller scale test, is that something we could design in the, in the period of time?
To revisit, uh, it's possible, but I would suggest that, just so that we have an apples-to-apples comparison, you know? We have all the information in the world at our own. We know, uh, inside and out, what the requirements, uh, really are to, to install it, we know, we know how it's gonna be installed, you know, the power level, we don't know much about the Gator pump side, we don't. So, before we move ahead, can we do, we would be open to doing a comparison, an apples-to-apples comparison, so you see what it is, because there are cost differences that are not being accounted for. There's also installation issues, there's things like that, and, and maybe that would be, provide the transparency that we're looking for, to then move to the next level, which would be to consider, you know, then we're doing redesign if necessary.
How long will that type of analysis take?
Well, Barbara's already started discussing, and then that's where we're having some, um, challenges, getting some feedback, uh, but we can look at other pumps as well, or other pump manufacturers to provide something similar, so that, again, we can get some comparisons. I mean, I think we're very comfortable with the pumps that we have, the pump that we have now, what it'll do, what it'll provide, and, and, you know, but we don't know. And, and these three pumps, are they in parallel, are they in series? Are they, and the cost of each one having a force main outs? To find a force main out, I mean, there's, there's challenges like that, just from a design perspective, that we don't know.
Um, Kyle, how many, uh, if, based upon all the streets that we're discussing here, if the pilot project worked, how many streets are we talking about? Or how many pumps are we talking about?
We have not analyzed that incomplete, and, and that is really the piece of the, we updated the master plan, um, and after our vulnerability study is complete with accounting, um, any kind of major long-term planning, I really feel we need to do a full master plan, I'll tell you.
Would you feel comfortable saying at least five?
Yeah.
So we're at, if we go with a low bid, we're at two-and-a-half million for five pumps. Um, so, what are we looking at to continue the evaluation and give us some comparison?
For comparing it with this current Gator pump option, I think we're probably in a couple weeks on order, just to get that information, provide a table showing side-by-side comparisons.
Uh, are you three comfortable with holding off for a little bit longer?
I think it's really important that we have that information, and if we can stick to that two-week timetable, I think that...
Okay. I just, I don't like hearing we're kicking the can down the road. We're not, we're making sure we're doing the right.
I pointed out that I pushed back last time and asked for the deeper analysis. And got like, Anders, are you willing to stand on this ledge and ask for ten more, you know, a couple months more of analysis?
And Anders?
And here we are, and I don't mind, I'm actually okay with it, I'm good with it.
Yeah, Anders, I.
Mr. Mayor, may I need this idea?
One second, Frank. Anders, I appreciate all of your efforts that you've made. And then Frank, I appreciate all of your efforts also for looking into all of this. And I think, Kim, you've done some of that also. And please, continue your hard work and do the very best you can for the city. And I appreciate you guys having patience with us while we work through this, because it's a hard decision.
It is.
This is not our money we're spending. So we wanna make sure that we're doing right for our community.
In my idea, maybe after all the figures are coming back, limit out of proportion. But I just don't see us having nearly three million dollars to procure the city pumps. And if we could do it under five hundred thousand dollars, and we got that twenty-second Street Bridge, we're gonna start up new businesses.
There's a tax.
All right, is there any more discussion on this until we have the evaluation done? Can we set the date for when we come back?
Yes, please.
Sure. You said, well, by this time, it will be the next work session unless you wanna do a special one.
So for the month of November, we have Thanksgiving that last week. So are we planning for the twenty-fourth?
We could, we could do one the week before. I'm sure there are a lot of people gonna be traveling Thanksgiving. In fact, I'm pretty sure there will be.
Seventeenth, who knows?
How long?
Vice Mayor.
How long are the bids good for?
It's good till January fourth, around there, so in January.
And Mr. Mayor, this is something that I brought up way back, I guess, when we were talking about, we just want the engineering firm to talk to the potential contractors to get some values, or do we gonna wanna go out to bid? And there was a discussion just a minute ago about, well, if we wanna go this other direction. And just for transparency's sake, I'm for that and not for this. But when you put this out here formally in contractors, these four contractors put a lot of work into this, and doesn't take many times, one time. And we say, you know what, thank you very much, we're not doing this. But the next time you need work from these people, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, I understand. I've asked all of you, just give me something to vote on.
I know.
I've been in this business all my life as part of contractors. Well, picks up the plans, bids it, hopes he gets it, doesn't get it, bids again.
Well, if he doesn't get it because he wasn't the low bid, or he didn't have the best offer, that's one thing. If the city just cancels it, that's a different thing.
I don't really think the estimate department really look at that.
I mean, they look at.
Here's the bid.
Okay. Let me ask you, everyone, what does November the seventeenth look like for you?
Good.
Good, my wife. What's November seventeenth look like? I think we're okay.
I meet the next day.
How about you, Kathy?
I think I'm okay.
How about Gemini?
We can make it happen.
Okay. Is there, are there any nays? We're good? Ready?
I'm just, I may be late, I have a meeting.
And Tom, if you can't make it, this is probably all we'll be discussing, so. All right.
So maybe one other point. When we do this gator analysis one, can we do it line item comparison to this? I mean, that's, to me, like, I could look at this, I think, you know, an eight-inch pipe, those things cost like two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars. Those are not small dollar items. In the old grand scheme, the big dollar items are a pump station, a pump, and a control panel, and power. Those are the big dollar items in this thing.
I just emailed Kyle, directional board copies quote.
Right.
He can send it to you or I can send it to you.
Right. Anyway, so yeah, as long as we can do it, like, what items are needed, and when ones go away, when ones get changed, by how much, that would be, that would be pretty helpful. Thank you.
All right, we would move on to item three, but Chief Grimes is not here. Before we move on, does anyone have any comments about what he's trying to do? Anything, any thoughts you'd like to plant in our heads before the next time this guest offers?
Yeah, I was looking at that. I was wondering, you know, I know you talked about maybe some other places that could put some maybe temporary structure. I think at one point we said, hey, why don't you put a temporary structure on the place where you're gonna build? And they clarified that there's not enough room on that site when they started doing the construction. And then I think there was an idea, well, let's go on the other side of the bridge or something. And I was, I mean, what about the parking lot, where the marina is? What about the parking lot? And I think I remember him saying that.
Like the marina?
Yeah, where the marina is, that area, would we be willing to let them put a temporary? Could be asked that, you know? And I know they said that a temporary structure would cost money. You know, I get it, but they're gonna put some money into this place too. Not as much, probably. I don't know how much cost it is. And then we have to weigh that against the impact to those residents that are feeling the pain. And maybe, you know, maybe there is a little pain in cost that the fire department absorbs. And I was looking at these maps and I thought that there was desire to get to more north coverage, better northern coverage, so I thought, heck, well, if it was up by the boat.
I think he was trying not to buy a mobile home, is what he was doing. And one of the residents said, well, you could buy a single wide, put four people in it, but come on, it's not.
We gotta do sewer.
Yeah, it's not realistic.
Okay. I mean, I think at the construction sites, they could, they could live there.
Come on, basketball, they're gonna be competing for all that.
How about we just change the name to First Responder Bed and Breakfast?
No short time around.
Say it. Permanent Bed and Breakfast.
So. Any other comments?
I mean, I voiced my opinion tonight at the meeting, but I, you know, we have money to spend to do, to renovate the house, it needs to be done. Probably don't have enough to get everything done, if they're willing to offset those costs. I just don't see it as a no-brainer to me. I don't, we need the support services, we need life safety stuff. I mean, they're parking our parking lot here, they're not gonna be in the residential street with the vehicles. I don't see why, I don't, I, really, I'm in total support of it, and we'll do whatever we can to help them with the process. And I think it's beneficial to residents.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
If I lived on the northern end of the city, I don't like where I live, the response to it. But the northern end of the city, fingers, I can't see why the people, the people don't even know about the meeting. It wasn't very publicized, but if one person died or had a stroke, I don't know, you look at yourself like having that office sitting right here.
I echo all of that, and what I said for me, and I still believe, I think it's a wonderful solution. It helps us get the building, the construction that we need. It's temporary, it's non-intrusive, and it may save lives, it's very important.
Okay, well, I have an assignment for all of you, because I still, I'm only hearing from all of you. Makes perfect sense to me, but again, it's not of our backyards. It's not right next door to us, it's not across the street from us. And we saw what happened, and even Chief Grimes was completely overwhelmed as he was speaking with him. And he finally just backed off and said, I won't do that to you. And then, in the next breath, the next time he walked in the building, what does he do? He tries to get us to do, to make the decision for him. And my assignment to all of you is, whenever this comes out to a vote, please, call your constituents, call your neighbors, have them come, sit down, and not be afraid to stand up and say, I want this. Because right now, all I've heard is, I don't want this. And I need to hear it from some, from some people so that I can, with a good conscience, say, sorry, I had to do that, but I'm gonna have to vote yes. But until then, until I see people out there saying, I want this, I'm still having a phone call about it. You know? It's.
I've gotten lots of phone calls with people that don't want it, and I get any phone calls from people that do want it.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, we need.
Or emails, I get emails from.
We need something. I need something more than a lanch mob ready to attack us because we're moving, or trying to move forward with this, all right?
I'm just curious, so the emails or phone calls you received, were those from?
They're all.
Anybody that didn't live on that street? All the people on Cedar, what's the next one?
It's the tree streets.
And the tree.
The tree.
Yeah. So yeah, those three streets, yeah.
Okay.
And some that cross the bridge, and then the boulevard side, the boulevard side too.
All right. Just add the last, last I met with Chief, him and the commissioner, they're dedicated to fixing the gap in service. And they've been talking about different ideas in Indian Rocks Beach and, you know, the ideas we've been talking about here. And they'll propose ideas here and other ideas, whatever is agreeable to give a solution. So that's, that's the intention. And he couldn't make it tonight, but he intends to come to our regular meeting to throw in ideas. And we have developed FAQs, like asked, and he's been answering most questions, of all possible questions that could come up.
Right. And I will tell you this, that there is no guarantee we'll get that paramedic. There's no guarantee, because you have to be established before you can go to the county and start begging for county funding. So that's another process in itself. I am on the EMS advisory committee or council, and I've heard everyone get up and agree on something, and then as soon as we walk out of the room, they vote the opposite way. So there is no guarantee that we're gonna get a county-funded paramedic, but I will guarantee that we'll get people here that are able to perform CPR. And if, God forbid, life needs to be saved, then that would happen.
Is it possible to generate like a petition that we could take door-to-door and, I mean, since?
I would starve.
I have a lot of, a lot of neighbors that are, you know, they work.
Yeah, we have a communication problem here, we really do. And it's because Kyle doesn't have all the resources. It takes time to put something together, I will say. Kathy does a great job.
Yes.
And so maybe that's something that you could maybe start in your city letters, educating people that, hey, no decision has been made, but here's what's being talked about. And we're gonna send out a survey very soon. And then we send out a survey and we see what comes back. Because then, we would have something more concrete.
Well, we did that easy survey. How many people got involved with that, door-to-door?
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
What'd they do, they sent their vote into the city or something, get how it works?
We did drop-off.
Yeah.
They sent them over. Like a walking, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I remember how your vote got, they either tell us, or they could drop it off in the mailbox. We did it all sorts of ways.
I think they were the one charm vote or something, or maybe they just got delivered and they had to do a paper vote or something, but.
Would I be game for it, get to five or six streets, seven, eight streets?
Right.
All right, that was nice. All right. All right, now, let's move on to item number four, which is discussion, Bellar Shore negotiation update. There's my. All right, so I went and presented an MOU to Bellar Shore, and, or actually, I emailed it to them, and then I went to the last meeting. And at the time, Vice Mayor Story was chairing the meeting and Mayor Lou was not there. And the first thing that he did was he wanted to argue about whether it was a deeded access or a licensed for the city to use the access. And I took a deep dive into all that, and you can call it wherever you want to, but we, they are legally not allowed to block our access. You can call it a license, or you could, you know, if you say it the way that it's legally written, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, you're pretty much splitting hairs if you don't call it deeded access, if you give it the long technical term. There's not, I think the big difference is, is that there's actually, there's a piece of paper about an easement. Whenever you're, in legal lease speak, you're talking about deeded access, is that correct?
I think that the analysis that we've done is it's labeled as a license. And I think that's how Randy has done it, and I don't know if that's how I would label it as a license.
Right, but the license is granted by what?
By way of deed.
So I consider it deeded access. And he wanted to argue about that, and Joe Manzo was there, and he spoke about it. And at the end of the day, I was able to get them to at least lengthen the chain that locks the gate to allow a three-foot access to let people, so people could let themselves in and out. So I at least got that. And.
Is that the first meeting? Meeting before?
Before he came.
Before he came here? That was negotiated before that? I thought you got that negotiated.
I'm kinda getting fuzzy on the timeline.
Okay, okay, okay.
I think he showed up.
Then he came here, and you were, you were remote during that meeting.
I was remote.
Right, right. Yeah, and he was here and got a little.
So this is the pre-meeting, this is the meeting that occurred before the meeting here.
Correct. Okay.
And so, so anyway, he, would you like to speak?
I'm just gonna give an email that you were talking about, just a timing of your discussions.
Okay. All right, yeah, yeah, so let's see here. I actually emailed Tom and I said, I'm bailing out on the MOU idea. And the reason why was because I had a brief phone call with Vice Mayor Story, and he said, I can tell you right now, we will never sign that MOU. And I said, so you're telling me, I just need you to spell it out for me so that we're both on the same page. Are you telling me that I'm wasting my time? And he said, yes, you're wasting their time. I said, okay, all right, so let me ask you this. Or do you agree that you legally should not be restricting our access at any time of the day? And he said, yes, I do agree with that. And I said, okay. So what we need to do is, we need to figure out some way that we can accommodate both. You obviously don't want cars to come into the parking lot. You don't want people having their cars there at night, or having a way that they can slip their car in there. I'm assuming your biggest fear is cars, not pedestrians. And I said, and here's why I think that is. Because, number one, I've heard short-term rentals is a problem. Well, we don't have short-term rentals. I've heard pedestrians are walking across the bridge all night long. And I said, I get up and I walk the bridges, and I don't ever see anyone making a beeline into those gates. See, if anything, I would worry more about Indian Rocks Beach, where they do have short-term rentals, you know?
And they just walk down the beach.
And you've got people that live in condos in Bellar Beach. And blocking those gates would not prevent them from coming down the beach. So your solution really is not doing anything except for blocking us out. And so I said, what I would like to do is, I would like to reach out to my city attorney, and I'd like for you to reach out to your city attorney, and see if there's any issues at all with us just installing a gate that doesn't lock. Because we, I don't even think there should be a lock at all. doesn't lock, because we, I don't even think there should be a lock at all, I think that this combination, or an access card, or anything like that, that will, that could prevent someone in Bellar Beach from having access, just because they didn't buy a card, or they didn't come in and get one, I said, would it be okay if I reached out to our city attorney to verify that we can actually just install a gate that latches, and then that way you can padlock your gate an hour after sunset, and open it up an hour before sunrise, and I said, just find out, and I'm gonna, you find out if it's okay for you to accept this gift from Bellar Beach, and I'll find out if it's okay for us to give this gift to Bellar Shore, so reached out to Tom, and Tom says, yeah, because it benefits the citizens of Bellar Beach, it wouldn't be considered misuse of municipal funds, so that's kind of where we are, I've received a phone call, and a few days later, and was advised to just hang tight, and instead present this in front of Bellar Shore, instead of directly to the Vice Mayor, so that's where we are, and I knew that the schedule and the work session and everything would work out the way that they were, so my question is to the council, is everybody okay with me offering this gift on behalf of the city, that we install three latching gates on the accesses, I've looked it over, it looks like it can be done, the gates don't slide two gates, it's one gate, and there's one side that's wide open, and the other side's got, there would be some things to figure out, such as how to make sure that it's a safe pathway into there, but I, that's, I'm trying to offer an olive branch that solves both problems, you can lock your big gate, you don't have to worry about cars and people going in there and loading up their cars with stolen items and walking away, because they do, they've got a lot of empty homes right now, a lot of things are under construction, and I understand their fears about that, and I believe that they have had some run-ins with robberies and trespass, I'm very confident it's not us, and I don't think we're the problem, but I think that just based on the location where we're at, I believe it's very easy for bad guys to come right in and do whatever they want to, so that's what I'd like to offer, and let's see what they say, provided that this council agrees.
I support it.
Are you talking about like sliding gates, lock, and on the side there's a people gate that just opens?
Yeah.
I think that's.
With a latch, and then that way, we're not relying on a bicycle chain to secure their big gate, because if a storm came in.
It'd be the right size, that's all I keep thinking about, this chain, this little chain, what if you don't fit through there, I mean.
Water chain.
Sure happens, you know.
So it has a latch, but it doesn't lock?
What's that?
It has a latch, but it doesn't lock?
It does not lock, but it latches.
I think it's a great solution, I think it's probably a very cost-effective one.
I believe that we could actually cut their fence and use the pieces that came out as the gate, I think somebody that, that a gate company could probably make that happen, and it would be relatively inexpensive.
And thank you for hanging in there, so good negotiation.
I'm not sure if I could use that, try it out and see if the compact gate companies, if they can do something like that, but it should be something that can work out. Starts with an idea, and we'll see if they agree or not.
I think we'll be surprised at the expense, but I would support it.
Okay, so I have another piece of email, I'll get to it in just a second, so Vice Mayor Story reviewed the MOU, and wanted to schedule a meeting with myself, and Tom, and their city attorney, and Vice Mayor Story, and I'm, I think I'd still want to present it to their council tomorrow, one of their council members or commissioners actually did reach out and ask for a copy of the MOU, but I think that, probably an MOU is still required, but I've, I want to make it as simple as possible, and then we can hand it over to the attorneys and let them figure it out, I think just discussing an MOU is right now, they just need to understand, we're trying to offer a solution, and we're trying to not only help ourselves, but keep you out of trouble, and they're, based on everything that I've, all the research that I've done, there is no time that you can say they're not allowed to walk on the beach, and that's the way I feel about it, and so there you go, everybody good? Okay, yes.
I was just visualizing, instead of having a separate gate, and what you also said, Joey, was that, you know, why it doesn't have to be, I'm sure there's a way that the current gate is there right now, could be open to a point, to allow people through and lock at the other end, instead of having a separate screen gate that's going to cost money?
Yes, however, the reason why I'm suggesting a human gate is because if that thing is hanging out there in space, and it's not latched properly, and we have a storm, that gate's going to be destroyed.
It's going to be destroyed anyway, if it's a scenario.
Wind event, right?
No, because it'll be, it'll have the other gate and latches, the other piece of fence that the rolling gate rolls up to and connect, so that will at least stop it from blowing over.
Right, I'm just trying to, not only that, but I'm trying to make sure that it's, there's not a gap open, so that every time anyone passes.
It looks close.
It looks close.
Alright, what you're proposing is what they're doing?
Yeah.
That's the current.
Right, except it could be actually, it's just done with a cable.
Right. Yeah, you're looking at a latch on the other end, and it could be locked, so it couldn't be moved.
Okay.
Let's just see what they say. Well, I've been looking into this too, and really, you've got to go back to 2022 when Mr. Story moved here, and he's like Steve Blum on steroids, he doesn't want anybody on the beach, basically, alright, I attend, is Mr. Blum, he's saying, I attend more of their meetings and most of their.
Mr. Baker, I'm gonna, I'm going to, I'm gonna interrupt you for just one second, because these meetings are publicly recorded, and I've always heard and always felt that you get more whenever you're nice, and you are not talking about people, or trying to be abrasive, and right now, I'm trying to ask Bellar Shore for a favor, so.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, I can agree somewhat with that, but what, in my 12 years here, what, can you name one thing they've done to help out Bellar Beach, just one? Nothing, they have never helped us out, they've always threw hindrances in front of us, now, I went to Kevin Bearfield, our state rep, about this, she said she was going to try to get a meeting with the governor, because he's very, very adamant about free access to the beach, so she was sitting down with his chief of staff, I believe Friday, last week, I haven't heard back from her, so one of her first questions was, how do you get a handicapped vehicle there? Oh, that's a good question, how do you get a handicapped vehicle there? Alright, the second question was, how long were those gates there? 20 years, well, what was the problem for 20 years? There wasn't a problem, until somebody moved in, I'll keep the name out, alright, so the other thing was, I contacted Ms. Palmer today, their city clerk, I said, could you give me the permit number when they reinstall the gates? You'll have it. So the gates were probably installed illegally, alright, so I then contacted the county, looked at it, they don't have a permit, they told me to file a permit complaint, a violation, which I did, the other thing is, those deeds clearly says, no hindrance or molestation of anybody trying egress or regress, it clearly says in the deeds, the other part of the deeds is no permanent structure, now, there wasn't a deed, there wasn't a permit, I believe, I can't find any permit, the last couple weeks I've been searching, when they put them in in 20, or 2003, I think that's when they installed, I think the whole thing should be removed, I wouldn't give these people any consideration at all, they have never given us any consideration, at the beginning of this year, they were talking about replacing the gates, we're going to need your help with costs and that, we only have so much funds, they have $800,000 in their savings, okay, they're $800,000 plus, they've got two years of a free flat sheriff contract, they never raised their costs, so all they're doing is bleeding us for money, I wouldn't support anything that restricts my access with a gate or anything, I want free access to that beach, that's what I was given, that's what I was told when I bought my house, and the other thing is, those, I don't believe the city has any right to negotiate a gate or any other type of structure on those access lots, because those are gated to the landowners east of Goth Bull, so you would need every landowner, and that's what I wrote to the county about, to agree to any type of structure that goes on that once, so I wouldn't, I'm fed up with these people, the other thing is, you should really look at some people that you're negotiating with, their background, and what they may be facing in the future, and that's easily pulled up on the internet.
Alright, are you finished?
Yep.
Alright, so I will go there tomorrow, I'm sure that I will be, interference will be ran on me by people that live in the city, and some people that live or that work on this council, but I'm going to do the best I can, and we'll see what happens. Alright, so now we're going to move on to general business.
Dave, can I just ask a question? How does that work with sunshine laws, if we've got multiple council members showing up at a meeting discussing this matter, for instance, is that an issue?
No, because it's a public meeting.
Okay.
It's been publicly noticed.
Okay.
And so the person that came in here and made accusations was incorrect.
Okay.
Okay, alright, now we're on the general business, I was informed that on November the 20th, our city manager is up for a new contract, Tom, would you like to address that?
Sure, we know that Kyle's employment agreement was entered into a number of years ago, it was actually entered into on November 28, 2022, it had three terms associated with it, the final term, which is the one we're in right now, expires November 20 of this year, so Kyle's contract is up at that time, so I had reached out to the mayor, asked for some direction as to how we wanted to move forward with regard to Kyle's employment agreement, he has expressed his desire to continue on as the city manager, I specifically asked Kyle what he was looking for in proposed changes to the agreement, because in negotiating these over the past 30 years for different city managers, there's always a request for a salary increase, there's usually a request for 401K or 157 plan increases, health insurance, more vacation time, more time off, those are the types of things that are being asked under rules, and so Kyle responded, I don't want any changes to my agreement, which is probably something that I've never heard of, but anyhow, so.
I can find out.
Really drug tested, so he obviously is entitled to have his employment agreement modified or ratified based upon the direction that you give me, I have prepared a third addendum, but I need direction as to what you would like to do, and the mayor has suggested changes to it, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, alright, so I asked Kyle for, hey, where are you at right now, and he gave me that, roughly $140,000, he was prior to that, in January, at 126.5, so if everyone remembers, we had something called hurricanes, and there were a lot of people jumping ships and moving around, and we, face it, we love Kyle, we think he does a great job, and we wanted to make sure that he didn't jump ship on us, and so we increased his pay and some of his staff by 10%, and so obviously, that's not something that happens every year, but I feel like, apparently because Kyle's not asking for really anything, that he must feel like he's probably in the right area also, so normally we do an employee review, and we come up with score, and we discuss it, and then we decide on a raise, well, whenever there's a new contract, we don't do that, so my recommendation, because he's expressed his interest in staying, I would like to do another three years with Kyle, I would like to, this year, because he's not having to go up against the review, just give him a 4%, and then, and then each year following, he would be for the standard employee review process, and he would be eligible for up to a maximum of 5%, that's just me throwing some stuff out there, I didn't have a lot of, a lot of time to think about it, but I thought that that sounded pretty reasonable, I don't, I don't know what everyone else thinks, so Joey, you're always the numbers person, and you, you always are very outspoken whenever it comes to money, so I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Well, I mean, I don't disagree with you, I think Kyle deserves more than the pay, you know, always the benefit.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
What are we, we can just for your insurance, your family's insurance, what do we have?
So I take advantage of an administrative policy we have to not take the insurance, and then get the payment, which I believe is $300 each month, and I use my life insurance to.
So you have that, you have car allowance, right?
Right, I do need a car allowance.
And what else?
Life insurance, paid leave, retirement plan, those are the.
How much of paid leave, does it escalate through the years, or?
So there hasn't changed relative to paid leave in the first addendum.
Have you had difficulty kind of actually using your leave?
I've gotten better.
Yeah, we were forced to take vacation.
It's on the record that he has.
And I think we have some language in there, that if there is a scenario where you can't use your leave, if we give him the option of getting paid.
Right, bio.
If you'd like, I'll read that paragraph.
Okay.
So this was the first addendum, which was signed on November the 7th, 2023, it says, manager shall provide a vacation equal to 15 workdays per calendar year accrued on the effective date of employment, maximum cool vacation leave shall be in accordance with City Personnel Manual, Section 10.14A, as amended from time to time, but in no event, no more than 40 days at any given time, and then you added this sentence, notwithstanding any provision in the city's personnel policies, contrary the manager may at any time between November and December, each year surrender and receive the full catch value of any leave time accrued in excess of the 40 days he has otherwise permitted to work.
And there's no carryover?
I do know it.
Yeah, there's no carryover.
I don't know my current balance, but I definitely took at least two weeks in the past year, because I was able to do a winter vacation or summer.
Did you say you can accrue year over year, or do you, it's like you cash out for years?
You cashes out and can keep 40.
You can keep 40 from year to year, a carryover of 40, okay.
So, yeah, so I think, given that, I mean, I'm in support of what, you know, but you don't know where you're at with your balance, but.
Longer.
I'm just curious, because I'm like, are you using them, and you need more, like, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure that out.
Even when he's on vacation, he's on a call.
I know, so that's why I'm trying to. I know, that's why I'm trying to.
I think we should update.
I called Mary Bailey's on vacation.
You did.
Just to say.
Just to say, what's going on in Little League today?
I will say, when he's on vacation, he responds to my texts about, about five minutes later than he normally does. My wife refers to him, used to refer to him as poor Kyle, now sick Kyle. Can I wait for my verification code?
Is there like 401K?
Yes, yeah.
No pension, right?
No pension. It's just 401.
Just state?
A state, yeah, a state.
Eight times. No, 10%. Same, 10% through the court witnesses.
And we match 10% per rest.
It's dollar for dollar, 10%?
That's very.
That's pretty.
Yeah. It's very, like, are you?
That's for the, that's just for the 401K.
Do you have advantage of that?
You're not part of the Florida retirement system, right? Or rest. So what, what is the retirement system in Florida?
The Florida retirement system is 7%.
My wife's a teacher, so I'm very familiar with that. Yeah, yeah, you did. But is it, what's an E in that?
Well, it's kind of like a state work.
So I think supposedly.
It's a participatory, you know?
Same thing Dave did on the table.
It's almost a.
So he's getting 10%. Oh, but I thought you said there's a pension too. He's dependent on, okay, so he's old, so this is.
Fine contribution approach, right, with the form of.
Okay, gotcha.
Did you, did everyone hear that? Joey recommended adding five additional vacation days. All right, what else, what comment?
5%.
You propose 4%? It's four now and then five, up to five each additional year.
So on its review cycle?
I'd like to see if they apply this year.
It's a much rounder number.
Well, most employees got 5% for this year.
You struggle to use, you said you struggle to use the three weeks that you have right now?
Yeah, with the pay.
Right, I know, I know. I could just pay them, but I mean, like, I get the use it intended to be.
A man had to leave the country to get away from this issue.
I get it, right. I mean, I would, I encourage vacations and take a break from us, from this place, you know?
All right, well, let's, let's go around the room, five or four, Joey?
I'm good with a four.
I like five. Weeks of vacation.
No, no, no. Percent increase.
Oh, four.
What'd you say?
Under four. Four, okay. That's what you said, right, and then there's five. What's that? No, no, we're voting on whether four percent or five percent.
Was that for?
For the contract renewal and then you still get 5% renewal every year.
No, he has to force it.
Oh, yeah, up to max up to five. But the question right now is four percent now for the renewal or five percent.
Okay, and Frank, you're, you're at five. Time. Oh, that's what it is, all right. I'm going to stick with my four and that just four went. So Kyle, are you okay with that?
Yes. I'm sorry, I couldn't look.
It's a pay relief.
Okay, so Tom, do you think that you'll be able to have this wrapped by next Monday?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, in that case, let me shake your hand and welcome. Four years.
Thank you.
Is it four more, four more year?
Three.
Three.
I did, I did. Now, Kyle, you can buy your wife a nice Christmas gift this year because four was five.
But it'd be nine, nine.
But can you cash in the extra week this year? Can you cash in the extra week this year?
All right, well, we got that worked out. Do we have any more general business? Anything anyone would like to bring up? Would everyone like to go home?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I will just say, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, sir.